We've got seven o'clock, you ready to go?
I'm ready.
Waiting on, waiting on you. Okay.
I'm ready, sir.
Seven o'clock and I'd like to uh uh call the order of this uh the Electric Webster Board meeting for July 9th, 2020. And I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, uh this evening we have initially a presentation uh regarding the Xerox Roomway project by Matt Chapfield. So I guess at this particular point, I will uh turn this over to Matt and he can discuss the project a little bit further.
Great, well thank you, Terrell, hopefully everybody can hear me.
Uh, I guess.
What I'd like to do is refresh everybody's memory about this uh the award of funding for Empire State Development. And then talk about the next steps uh in the part, uh the COVID uh emergency and some general economic issues dealing with uh and some business matters related to Xerox has kind of helped this uh start of this project um really take shape. Uh but I think at this point, we are ready to continue uh taking progress with this, with this initiative. Uh in hopes that uh we can stay off the state actually pulling the funding back from us uh should they not be happy with our progress. I I have not been given any indication uh that they're willing to do that, but uh it's always good to make sure that we're moving forward. Um and uh and we're getting organized as we speak. So as you remember, uh hopefully you all have in front of you um a series of documents that be handed out. Uh the first document would be the award letter from Empire State Development. This is dated uh December of 2019. Uh we were awarded 1.838 million dollars towards the ultimate uh engineering design, environmental work, and the rehabilitation. And then following that, the transfer of certain roomways from the Xerox campus to Milch. The transfer would not take place until rooms are rehabilitated. The funding that we have uh applied for and been awarded is only a portion of the overall project. And the overall project budget, which is in the following pages, is roughly 9.2 million dollars. And we have been awarded 1.8 million of that effort in New York State funds. So we have about 20% of our funding awarded. Um right down here, you can see we have about 20% of our funding awarded currently. Uh and that should be sufficient for us to conduct engineering, right away mapping, and potentially some uh construction as well. So the hope is to begin this project um once we have uh undertaken, entered into some negotiations with Xerox Corporation regarding their participation in the project. The, as you can see down here, uh there is a private contribution of roughly 527,000 dollars. So on the order of banks, you're about a half a million dollars. And that would be a delta that would need to be made up um by Xerox and or a future owner. So at this time, we do not see, foresee any funds coming from uh village of Webster taxpayers or town of Webster taxpayers. Uh the uh the goal is uh for this to be funded either through state and federal and private efforts. So where we stand today is the village has been rewarded. And essentially, they've been promised a seat at the table, let's put it that way. Uh there's multiple steps that we need to undertake from this point forward. Uh and the first of which, and I'm sorry, I keep scrolling through here. But the first of which is, we need to provide them with a project budget and uh an overall uh basically a uh a final project proposal. Um we have not done that yet for a few reasons. Uh because we wanted to stay off the project a little bit and we also needed to make sure that we had sufficient buy-in uh from Xerox. At this time, they are interested, uh but we don't have a firm commitment from them as of yet for a specific dollar figure. That that is part of our next steps. Uh so the overall goal is we submit this project budget. The uh state, New York State, Empire State Development would then approve that. And then that is the basis for which we move forward. So we don't want to submit uh a project proposal that's finalized until we feel very comfortable with it. Um because we will be held to that, uh there won't be any um you know, changing that will be very difficult. And then the reimbursement to the village uh in a future date is all based on the the first initial uh proposal that we provide to them. So.
Okay.
So I'm gonna pause right now and see if there's any questions.
Do you have any idea on uh the answer for Xerox? Any kind of timeframe, anything? I know it's been different.
And and right, I I believe the ball is in our court. Uh I spoke with the Director of Facilities uh for the Northern Hemisphere and their Director of Real Estate. Um I spoke with them in early May. And they seemed very interested in continuing the dialogue. They were, you know, they were thrilled that the village had secured funding. Um they were curious as to the next steps as well as what we were asking of them. And at that time, I didn't ask them for money. Um I was not uh interested in in starting that conversation on the very first discussion. Uh but I think we're at a point now where we need to be able to provide them with what we see as the project uh next steps. Like a schedule and then the budget and then where they come into play as far as participation. I think that's really the next steps uh with Xerox.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it was really good, thank you, Stan.
That's unfortunate.
Now, and these roads then become uh the property of the village of Webster?
Yes, the proposal, the proposal is for the following roads, Mitchell Dean, San Jose, Orchard, and Panama. Yep, that's the, the proposal is for those roads to be transferred into the public domain, yes.
Which then would open up the possibility for uh the further distribution or breaking up of the Xerox campus, right?
It's a little right. Terrell, the the real main driver behind doing this is that the campuses, you know, 770 acres. All of those buildings, many of them vacant, um do not interfronction any sort of public road. And the developers and investors that we've spoken with in the past um have expressed interest in the buildings themselves, but they've had a lot of questions about how uh a lot of this infrastructure and then uh access and easements um would would take place. And you know, for for example, you know, Mitchell Dean Drive as a private road has about, you know, 2 million square feet, buildings fronting directly on it. Um so we would, and most of them are vacant, so the Xerox would be able to divest those one at a time. Uh and they would still maintain access to a to a public street. And then, of course, you know, anybody who's gonna buy the building is gonna put it to immediate use. Uh they're not gonna buy a building and let it sit vacant, so.
Very good, very good. Yeah, I'm happy with that. Thank you, Matthew.
Okay, so uh being efficient to the, you know, so providing that overview of the of the project. Um part of the next steps are to really move this, to move this project forward. And in order to do that, uh we believe, at least it's it's uh we just uh believe is that you need to have one, basically the one team member, you know, for the village to help do that. And have somebody that would be able to provide a, you know, a significant amount of time and expertise to getting the project at least started and moving forward. Um so we have made a proposal to the village to act as essentially a project coordinator. Uh and that would include several tasks, uh which don't have to be uh all of which don't have to be mutually exclusive to one another. Uh it could be a, an all-in-one situation where uh the village is looking for some project startup assistance. Uh coordinating with uh Empire State Development and Xerox. Um helping with uh the consultant selection process if you're gonna require uh extreme, um I would say professional, you know, transportation consulting experience. Um and I've, you know, we've helped uh the village in the past with this for the uh North Avenue project. Um so helping with that process. Um helping form an advisory committee of of people that will help guide uh the project and provide that guidance to the village. And uh at least some initial startup grant administration. Uh and then that effort, you know, could continue on through the remainder of the project. Um if the village wanted to have sort of like its own in-house, um you know, project management team. And then it could also have a team that would help uh with the public engagement component, which still will be several public meetings uh throughout the duration of this project. So this is um an effort that's would be an hourly, not to exceed uh the hourly rate that we, you know, we bill, uh for my time is 125 dollars an hour. And then these fees would be paid out of the grant proceeds. Uh so they would not necessarily come directly out of village coffers. Uh they would be similar to when you would pay your engineering consultant. Um instead of paying, uh let's say, a Labella or a uh Martin Judas for some of these services. You know, we, it would be uh the initial consultant to help get the project up and running. So the the hope, the goal was to at least present, you know, this this proposal uh this evening. You know, ask pretty questions. And then if the village board decided to, it would be able to take up um any sort of action. Uh if it chose to at July 23rd.
Okay.
Um um, you know, I'd like to field questions, if any, uh regarding the proposal.
Do you have questions?
Matt, would you as a coordinator or primarily uh primary liaison regarding this project? Or we?
Uh, yes, I mean, I would be the, I would be the, I would be the staff person. Yep, we would, not hire an additional staff person for the state, it would be my time um toward this effort, uh building upon uh the experience uh and the organization that we have conducted to date uh to move this project forward, basically from its inception to where we are now.
Could you clarify a little? I'm, I'm trying to uh solidify and I had the timeline. Uh.
Yeah.
Need some of the uh some of the time estimates that you mentioned just to put the proposal together, is that right? So what happens if uh we get that 1.8 million if the project doesn't go, correct?
Correct, correct. And we would, obviously, the the initial steps would be um right now, to right off the bat, uh to apply time, to apply effort towards the initial project proposal to Empire State Development. And then, of course, to ensure that Xerox um would be on board and would provide uh essentially its participation, because without Xerox's participation, the project does not move forward. And none of the other work would be conducted, none of the consultation, uh consultant selection, um none of the rest of it would happen. So really, the next true steps um are securing that commitment from Xerox, because without that, uh the project would be dead in the water. And at this point, you know, I'm gonna be honest. If that takes, you know, 20 hours or, you know, so uh of time, you know, to get to that point, and the project falls flat on its face, if the alliance isn't gonna build the village for for that time, um, you know, it's just that that becomes, that just becomes, you know, essentially, that time is, that be uh thought of as time that's traditionally part of what I would arrive in the village via my normal uh uh, you know, staff requirements of the alliance itself. A couple of effort for what we're moving, again, what really needs to be accomplished and conducted here is beyond what would be normally uh provided to the town, the village, municipal district, the chamber for any initiative, any single initiative. Uh because it's very specific toward one member of the alliance itself. And the board is, you know, of the, you know, that believes that they're fine with the staff's time being devoted to that. Uh but there needs to be a, you know, essentially a consultant agreement in place.
That makes sense. And so, is there, is there any circumstance or situation where the village would find its holes with uh costs that it did have to cover that we weren't anticipating?
Not that I, not that I can foresee currently. I mean, as far as costs to we itself, I I do not foresee any, any costs. Um the goal, if it's an agreement, part of the agreement would be that for um you know, Xerox uh or whoever the the bribe would be, but Xerox to provide this a chunk of money. And that money would have to come upfront, right? There would have to be a large chunk of that money, basically, the majority of that money would need to be provided to the village at the outset of the project, or very, very early in the project, such that the village could pay and pay, uh pay invoices from its consultants from that pot of money. And then after those invoices have been paid, then turn around and request reimbursement for those, for those invoices from state. And then any large tranches of money, probably, um you know, probably almost half a million dollars at a time. Uh depending on how, depending on how um they have to type for Empire State Development to give us multiple draws. Typically, they wanna see one draw. They wanna see, you know, okay, the project's fully completed. Now we'll, you know, our, what we need to do is, and that's part of the next steps, is we need to go to negotiate with them and say, we need a minimum of two draws. We need, um, because there's gonna be a lot of work conducted upfront. And then, obviously, once construction, you know, there's gonna be a lot of work upfront, there's gonna be a lot of engineering upfront, there's gonna be significant costs. Um you know, the village will likely have to uh during construction at least, you know, the village will likely end up having to borrow short-term. Uh and then pull from those, pull from that van. Uh, you know, and then get reimbursed at the end from Empire State Development once the project is closed up. So uh, uh Marsha, there is quite a bit of coordination uh with your uh chair that needs to happen regarding how this really works out.
Okay. So then really, if we can't get that half million private funding, right? Or if Xerox doesn't uh wanna participate, then then the water?
Then the project's, then the project's dead. I mean, the the village is not in the business of uh just taking over Xerox's roads uh on its, on its own recourse. Um, you know, this is an incentive to them.
To me? Thank you, but what?
That's why I asked the first question, how is Xerox doing?
I mean, based on, you know, their their cost to maintain this roadway system is pretty extensive. And they also know that the cost to redevelop and rehabilitate the roads is quite uh extensive as well. And uh if they could, if they did have to be on the hook for that, um that would be of benefit to them in the end. If, you know, pursuing this uh project would also make uh the sale and redevelopment of all our provisions more viable.
Yeah, it just makes it look better, you know, yeah, I I don't know why you're saying, yeah, let's try and use.
Uh they're not saying no, they just want more information.
Uh, and Matt, has uh, have any estimates or projections been done about the potential future cost to the village of maintaining those roads versus the tax income from that area?
So at the um, I don't have that information at my fingertips, but during the grant application process, I did um meet with Jake and we extensively uh discussed, you know, currently, there's X number of lane miles. And I think Jake may be able to chime in and he may recall that we did an analysis of how many lane miles and what their current budget was. And then, you know, obviously, this would be, you know, on a per lane mile basis, this would be a percentage increase thereof. Uh so we did do some uh back of the napkin estimates. Um and I think we could probably uh provide the board with some more detailed information. Uh based on, I remember it wasn't, it wasn't a banal at all. I mean, it's, it's, I would say it's not negligible. It's, it's not negligible, but the hope is that um or well, that essentially it becomes that, that economic, it's an economic development cost that the village is taking on, it's a spur investment in redevelopment. Great question, Marsha. It's a great, it's a great question. Jake, did you have any? Is Jake there? Jake, are you there, sir?
Yeah, I don't, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, we, I do recall the conversation on the, at the meeting going over all the numbers. I don't have them at the, uh, my fingertips right now, but um, you know, I I know we can certainly take those back up and provide them.
Yeah, it'd be nice to speak, and.
Oh, absolutely, and we do have those, uh, we did provide that, actually, that analysis, we provided um to the village board probably a year ago. And uh we did provide it as part of our grant application to uh the state government. So we can, we we will, I will review that and we can provide that, uh maybe some updated figures, maybe, you know, based on the 2020, 21 budget uh for the highway department. We have to probably, will be come up with some pretty decent figures uh for those uh particular budget categories.
Thanks. And how, how are, how would we estimate the, the skin village revenues then?
Well, that's actually gonna require, that's a good question. Now, when we have time as part of the application, part of the grant application, we did make um some estimates of what we thought the development potential was uh for either reactivation of vacant buildings or uh development in, on a new construction basis. And it was more like over the period of a, of a 10-year period, that's something that uh is gonna be in. Uh as far as new construction is concerned, we can make some broad estimates. Uh we can ask the assessor, we can ask Donna Kowar's office, you know, to provide us with some, some background information. Um but as far as a, a full cost benefit analysis, uh that's not something that we've conducted to date.
Yep, and I get there are too many variables to really nail anything down.
There's a lot of variables, I mean, obviously, you know, our, our hope is that, but even if we can, you, even if this doesn't spur a significant amount of new development on the Xerox campus itself, if it spurs, you know, you know, job, you know, you know, job activity, um, you know, uh investment activity at the building level, uh there will, like, the big spin-off benefit, there's, there's a multiplier benefit uh for, you know, new jobs and new investment um that flows into the economy. But, you know, as far as, you know, us being able to really estimate that, it becomes uh very much a and collegiate exercise, uh you know, a mathematics exercise. And we would make a lot of broad assumptions uh that very well may pan out or may not, so. Point is, there, there's no question, uh Marsha, there's, there is some sense of of risk, right? I mean, obviously, if this, if the village takes on this responsibility for, you know, new roads, you know, is that really gonna spur anything? And the hope is that, you know, based on all the other uh infrastructure that's in place and the economic opportunity and the fact that this is, you know, also in a federal opportunity zone, which is a uh, there's a special tax incentive program uh for this area. It would just be making it even more enticing uh for investment.
It could be, it could also be a challenge um with, with, if there's a new normal with COVID. So there's a lot of, a lot of huge companies, Matt, that are going the other way and 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 are gonna get rid of some bricks and mortar and do more mobile uh workforce and stuff, so it could be interesting.
Yep, correct. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we have a real good thumb on what the crystal, you know, on, on that crystal ball. Um I will say this, though, that if, if the village can secure state, federal funds to cover, you know, and and private funding to cover 100% of the rehabilitation and and basically redevelopment of these roads into, you know, a new, you know, uh industrial scale or business park, you know, parkway, tree line, sidewalks, and streetlights. Um.
Yeah.
The, there's, the, the overall maintenance for something that's brand new, and Jake will probably be able to agree, the overall maintenance for something that's brand new, at least is a little less, you know, in those first five, even 10 years, there may be some crack filling and, you know, maybe some sealing, um, on brand new roads. Uh you're gonna have a, a bit of, of land, uh you're gonna have a, a bit of roadway and sand ahead of you time perspective before there's any funding that the village would need to put into serious rehabilitation. So time would be on your side to let the economy and the market kind of respond.
I agree, I think that um anytime you make an investment, there's a certain level of risk. Um but doing nothing, there's uh, we kind of know uh that risk is a little more easy to identify if there's buildings that are sitting down there without access to public roads. They don't, they stay empty for a while. Um this is kind of what, you know, if you build it, they will come kind of approach, I think, that makes a lot of sense. And very little risk in the totality of the, of the budget, uh very little risk to the village or outlay to the village. Um, you know, with our outlay, you know, with the, and you in place, our, our uh outlay comes on the, on the backside of it.
Correct. Yep. Yep, but these are all very good. And this is, these are the exact questions that that should be asked. And this is, you know, the very things that the, the village board should be pondering. You know, it's, it's correct, it's, it's not a home run, it's not a no-brainer. But it's likely a better alternative than doing nothing. Or, and I could say likely, and I could say it's definitely a better alternative than doing nothing. Yeah, which would allow things to fall into complete disrepair and then have the current occupant walk away. And then we're left, we're left with a complete outlay truck uh on our hands. And then we're left, we're left with a complete albatross, uh, on our hands.
This would be an incentive.
I think it helps the village, uh, it provides an opportunity for the village to determine a little before the course of the, of the future, right? If we're gonna take dedication to this, we're gonna, you know, and this, and from that point, um, from a land use perspective, then it really allows you to, uh, you know, make some, uh, some more broader land use changes in the future, should you, um, you know, should you decide to modify zoning and create new districts or alter existing districts, you know, having that hard edge of a roadway and be able to say, okay, south of this is X and west of this is Y and, you know, to the north of Mitchell, we're gonna do Z. It, it, it really would allow the village that flexibility to, uh, to determine the future of the area.
Man, I have, uh, I had those letters, uh, that you were interested in, um, put on, letterhead from the village, so. Uh, we can see, um, I guess, uh, the next, uh, in terms of moving forward with this, um, proposal. But, um, I'm ready to go with those letters, that we start that, uh, committee, uh, working.
Right, yeah, I think, I think it's gonna get, have a valuable committee established, getting those people and, you know, that experience around the table. Um, they, they can ask, uh, ask the proper questions, that we can find the answers to those questions, uh, to ensure that the village is, is truly moving forward, in a way that protects itself and in a way that obviously maximizes the funding that's been provided to us today.
Hey, hey, man, were you, uh, were you gonna have any type of more formal retainer agreement or something other than this July one letter?
We can, uh, provide that. And, um, if that's, if you would like to see something a little more formal, I didn't know if you would, if you wanted to provide something, then. Uh, I, I want to, you, you, for us to provide.
Well, I, I would, I would ask you to provide and secure the funds, you know, you're the one being hired, but.
Sure.
And, you know, just for example, you, you say suggested fee structure, well, suggested, that doesn't mean, I don't, you know, you used the phrase, the word suggested, so, does that mean that isn't what the fee structure is, or you're only suggesting it? And the village could pick another one, you know, and so, I think you need something a little more set in stone, and, and the other thing is, since obviously the village hasn't budgeted for any of this, this sort of goes along with what Marcia said. And your statement that the upfront costs are hopefully gonna get paid by the money to be gotten from the landowner, i.e. Xerox. Would you consider making your fee, you know, contingent upon receipt of that private money? In other words, until, until you get a commitment from Xerox that they're gonna kick in money, what you do up to that point is just ordinary weeda work that you would, you're doing is just part of your normal job. But then, once you secure the money, if the money is secured, then pretty much, you know, this project could move forward. And at that point, I think it would be reasonable for you to get your hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, you know, going forward.
Correct. Yep, and I, I, I agree with that approach. And my, uh, I don't see any, um, pushback from my board on that approach. I mean, if, if the project doesn't move forward, um, you know, this isn't, this isn't really, uh, this isn't really a, uh, an, uh, the, the, uh, we're trying to take advantage of, of the situation.
No, I, no, I understand, we, we need this, we need this project to move forward as, uh, as a community. No, I under, I, I, I understand that.
Critical getting that done.
I understand that, so why not, what, so then, why don't you just do a, um, just, it can be just a short letter and, and, and say that, um, you know, that you're, that, that, you know, contingent upon receiving the approximately five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, or however you wanna phrase it, in private money, the village will, um, you know, pay you at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for whatever time you put into, uh, those tasks, one, two, and three. And then, that way, the board, then, then, then you'll have a signature line, you know, in there for the mayor to accept it. And the board will have to take a resolution to, you know, authorize the mayor to enter into, you know, this agreement with weeda.
Right, I did, I actually did not anticipate that this, when I had, when I wrote in front of it, I would, it would end up being signed. I, I did, I did anticipate having some sort of agreement and, and, and if it needs to come in the form of just a, a retainer letter, uh, that's perfectly usable in my book.
Yeah, just put something like that together and. Better take it up, uh, next meeting.
Any other, any other questions from the board regarding, uh, the total effort here? Uh, no, no, but thank you, Matt.
No, I think this is, uh, significant, Matt, and, um, you know, it's, uh, in order to really capitalize on that campus, uh, I think this would really, uh, lend itself to opening it up to private, you know, investment, uh, breaking it up and, and making use of it, so. If they're just sitting there, that's for sure.
I agree. Hey, perfect, um, so I, Heather, what do I do, I, do you just take it back from me, or do I, uh? What happens here?
I have Heather. I have Heather. We lost Heather, oh no!
Mom, I'm gonna be a loser, I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm here.
Cancel.
Sorry.
So you should, you should have control of the, the screen now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Oops, I was kidding.
Matt, you wanna, uh, you wanna get together? Uh, I don't know when you're available, but, um, I can at least show you what, uh, I have in terms of the letters from the committee.
Yes, um, I could be available.
Late, late after the next.
Early next week, can we, can we do it? You know, um, so Monday or Tuesday next week.
All right. All right, Tuesday probably, like, Thursday?
Yes, sir, Tuesday it is.
Right. I'll be in touch.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. All right, uh, next, um, item that we have for business is the annual organizational meeting. Uh, we need to go through and just, uh, from a number of these, uh, appointments and, uh, dates and all that kind of thing, so. Uh, we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. What I'll ask for is, uh, as I go through here, a motion, a second, and then I'll ask for all in favor, aye. And, um, we'll should not go with a rule call, aye? So. First and, first would be the appointment of, uh, Jerry. Uh, as deputy mayor, the accepts, uh, to act as mayor when the mayor cannot fulfill his duties. Uh, as an exception to that, we can talk about it. Um, for designations, the Canada National Bank would be designated as our official bank. Anthony Webster-Herald as our official newspaper, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, mayor's appointments, um, subject to approval of the board. Uh, first of all, would be reappointment of Joe O'Neil as deputy treasurer for a term ending in July eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. And the reappointment of Don White as village, the planning board and the zoning board of appeals attorney for a term ending July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and authorizing myself to, uh, sign a retainer, uh, agreement with Kelly White, unafreeable attorneys, L.L.D., play a motion.
Daryl, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt. We'll need Joe to also be deputy village clerk, please add that, that's on, it is on here, I apologize.
Uh, okay. Uh, so deputy village treasurer and deputy village clerk.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Problem. We have a motion?
We'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Uh, next we have the planning and zoning board, um, reappointment of Chris Craylon, uh, Craylons as chairperson of the planning board with a term ending July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. The reappointment of Mark Nicholson to person of the zoning board of appeals, term ending July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The reappointment of Kathy Dills, member of the planning board, uh, her term ending July twenty, two thousand twenty-five. And the reappointment of Bill Baker, member of the zoning board of appeals, term ending also July two thousand twenty-five. That motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Uh, next, historic preservation commission and historian. Uh, first of all, the reappointment of Peter Elder as chairperson of the historic preservation commission, term ending July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Luckily, the reappointment of the Parkland Village historian, also, term ending July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. That motion to approve?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. First we have Parks and Rec. Uh, first of all, the reappointment of Peter Elder to the Parks and Rec committee for a term ending July eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and the appointment of Vanessa Rosenberg uh, to the, uh, Redway Committee for a term ending July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Uh, the business improvement district, uh, is a motion to appoint, uh, the mayor, trustee Lancy and Gordon Clark to the business improvement district for a term ending July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, I have a motion, second. I'll make that motion.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Uh, next we have the ethics committee. Uh, this would be a reappointment of trustee Etoledo, uh, the village board member. Uh, reappointment of Joe O'Neil, uh, village employee, and, uh, the reappointment of Tom Sapola, village resident to the ethics committee, terms ending July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion, a second for approval? Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Uh, next, just generally for general office, uh, mileage reimbursement is set this year uh, for private vehicles at fifty-seven, uh, point five cents per mile. Uh, village office hours will be Monday, Friday, uh, Friday eight AM to four thirty PM, with the exception of Thursdays, which are eight to six PM. Uh, village offices closed Saturday and Sunday. Office also will be closed for all governmental holidays, including Good Friday, April second, two thousand twenty-one, uh, Friday, July second, and Monday, July fifth, in observance of Independence Day, and Friday after Thanksgiving, November twenty-sixth, and Friday before Christmas Day, December twenty-fourth. Um, and also the following tw- two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one village Webster policies adopted as written, the policy manual should be effective June first, two thousand and twenty, which is the procurement policy, section five-two. Over the general office, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Really?
Yes.
I just, I've noticed the dates, and there are twenty-twenty-one dates, you have another organizational meeting before December and November of twenty-twenty-one. All right, should they be twenty-twenty dates?
We do, um, well, we already voted on the twenty-twenty dates last year, so, um, Daryl and I decided that for holidays, so that people can plan, it should be calendar year, not, um, how our, not fiscal. So the rest of twenty-twenty was already voted on last year.
Motion?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, and next, let's see, we have a village meeting. Uh, village meeting is conducted according to section two-two. Regular village board meetings will be the second and fourth Thursday of each month at seven PM. Uh, meetings of the planning board will be the first Thursday, zoning board of appeals, the third Thursday of each month at seven PM. And village board workshop meetings will be on the first Tuesday of every other month at six PM. Uh, following dates for the village board meetings, uh, and any changes, October sixth, uh, village board meeting is moved to, um, excuse me, the workshop is moved to the twenty-ninth. July will be canceled due to Independence Day. Um, and then, uh, going into, uh, uh, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, moved to March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, September seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-one, moved August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And December seventh, two thousand twenty-one, moved to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, those are for workshop changes, change in the meeting dates for the village board meeting. Uh, November twenty-sixth of this year, twenty, twenty-twenty will be moved to the twenty-fourth of November, twenty-twenty. November eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, moved to November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, and November twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-one, moved to November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Believe that that November eleventh is for Veterans Day, is that changed, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So, do I have a motion to accept in a second? Make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. And finally, we have the, uh, village board liaison assignments. I don't believe that there are any changes to them from last year. Uh, if anybody would like to, um, uh, talk regarding a change, they've been, um, kind of known, so, uh, if you want to do that, we can make that discussion, have that discussion. But, um, I would, at this particular point, simply ask for a motion to, um, that the following liaison assignments would be in place for, uh, this year until twenty, July twenty-eighth, July eighth, two thousand twenty-one. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, the next organizational meeting will be Thursday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-one, prior to the regularly scheduled village board meeting. And, uh, hey, board, sit here, huh? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Uh.
I also attached, just so you have it, um, Don's retainer agreements, um, have those in your emails. Yep.
No, please, not of those.
And those I have, and Don, uh, I will sign them.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, give them to our clerk and she will forward them on to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, at this point, we'll move to public comment and questions. If there are any calling in, uh, from the audience, um, wait to see if anybody's calling in.
I got a question, sir.
Carl, that's you making that sound, I apologize. It says through tapping when the, the fuzz went through.
That was good. One call? Okay. If none, then we will move on into the, uh, regularly scheduled agenda, uh, making a resolution to approve the claims at once. Uh, probably we've all had a chance to watch them over, uh, does anybody have any comments to make?
I just had a couple of questions and Jake answered them. Um, the only thing that we were looking at is I didn't see anything for the cost of the sludge on the sewer end of it, so I didn't know. But that was, the other question he answered.
Is that part of this bill pay?
Yeah, if not, had a chance to look into, um, why it was not on there, you obviously it's still getting all the way, just, I don't know if they didn't bill because of the holiday or, um, if they'll have to.
I have a question about the billing of the rock salt at this stage of the game in July for nineteen hundred dollars, can you explain that one?
Well, we had COVID murder hornets, I figured it was gonna snow next, so we wanted to make sure we got some. Uh, no, we, we had a little bit of room in our bin, uh, this salt never gets cheaper, so we filled up the bin with the last, uh, last load there, a little bit of load, so that we can, um, start out with it fresh and, uh, you know, there's a, uh, you know, there's a ton cheaper than it's gonna be next year.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Um, another question.
It's the same, but.
Another question, Jake, is, um, five rigs, uh, three hundred dollars, that would be pretty significant for each rig. What kind of rigs are they?
I believe there's more things on that, uh, filled than the, just the five rig. I have to look at the bill itself, but I know there's a lot of things came in, the one with the gold handle.
Forty-dollar hammer.
Sorry, Jake, you gotta go do this.
Okay. One other question. Uh, urgency repair, uh, to have the well field, what was going on?
Uh, our garage on the drip edge, uh, the roof along the top of the block, it had come loose and it was blowing around there and water was getting down into the block. So, we had a company, saw the fuel and one of them said that they would come and do it, and, uh, so we, we hired them to come and do it.
Yep.
It was, it had been, uh, drip edge and the rig edge cap, it was basically a cap on the edge of the block there, so.
Daryl, I just had a question, I apologize. Um, if we, if, if everyone approves the abstract, can we also approve it with, we had the excels bills late today, so I was hoping that you could approve them, but also say, allow me to pay them tomorrow, if that's okay? Cause they're not in effect.
Excels bill?
Yeah.
My question.
Uh, Joe? They, they're usually the same, I can, um, send you an old one, um, I just don't have them, I was, but they just came in before Joe left, and so we're hoping to pay them so that we don't have any lasting coverage. Right. They're usually, okay, so, the employees are usually around twenty-one thousand, I believe, um, and then dental is sometime, sometime, somewhere around seven grand, and then, um, or Tyrese, I can't remember, do you remember, Joe?
It's not off the top of my head.
They usually don't.
I mean, all, all toll with everything together, it's, it's usually under thirty.
Yeah.
Under thirty thousand for all three of them.
And it usually doesn't vary at all?
Yeah.
In regards to my comment yesterday, Birchcrest, when's the last time we bid that out for the tree trimming?
Yeah. We bid it out every year that we do the tree trimming.
Yep.
And Birchcrest is considerably, considerably less than the, the other companies that are bidding on it.
All right.
And then, um.
You have well, Jake?
Yeah, Al also had another question about LMT, but, um, we were about to move to be a company, but this was worked before COVID and we could not justify, tried to make a change while we, while we were working from home, it just wouldn't have been possible. So, we still intend to do that, just when things kind of get normal again, hopefully. Uh-huh.
All right. Well, then, I, I, so, as for motion to approve the claims awards.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. All right, uh, next we have, uh, resolution to authorize, uh, the mayor and, uh, Jake to sign a union agreement for one-time vacation carryover. Uh, that is, um, as we have discussed in the past, uh, due to the extraordinary circumstances related to COVID nineteen pandemic, a one-time offer will allow employees to, on their next date of higher anniversary, to carry over accrued vacation days into the sick Jake and/or vacation accruals as outlined in the CBA. Uh, no more than five days may be carried over to the next year's vacation. Thanks for the rest, if any, going into sick accruals. Okay? So, do I have a motion to, um, have, um, myself sign the renewal contract, or to the, uh, vacation? Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. All right, uh, next we have a resolution to authorize the mayor or designate to sign a renewal contract with the Monroe County for period of September first, two thousand and twenty, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, for membership in the county's energy aggregation group. Uh, do I have a, um, higher motion to?
Sorry, I didn't give Don very much time to go over this because it's through Contract HQ, which, um, we rarely go on that, and I wasn't able to find my login, so we don't need this yet, but if Don's okay, I mean, it's just the agreement with Fluent, um, same thing, there hasn't been a savings, so it's, it's whatever you guys wanna do, we still have a little bit of time.
As long as Don, Don has no concerns.
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't read it.
Well, we should wait.
I haven't seen the contract.
The table is on.
For the reasons Heather said, they, they sent it to her with this website, where you had to have a login and password, she did not have that readily in hand.
Then I don't think you should, uh, uh, go forward with a vote without you looking at it.
Right. Yeah, no problem at all. No problem. No, I, I will get that, I don't know why they do it all by electronic, cause you can't even, if you wanna pull it up later, you can't even get a copy of it, it's very frustrating. Um, so, J, I think Jake, don't you have a login? I know Daryl does.
Yeah, I've got a login and, and, uh, in fact, I just brought it up right now, I'm looking for it. Um, it depends on who is the, who's assigned for certain things, like I do, uh, sign for, uh, the CBT grants and things like that that are going through, I see. I suspect that if you guys were to get on, um, you would be able to see, uh, this contract that is waiting, I don't see anything archived or, excuse me, waiting for action or anything like that, so I'd have to take a little deeper to get to the, the dashboard there and then do the documents.
Okay, and when I'm in the office tomorrow, I will get that to Don, figure it out. Um, basically, just, just so that's in your mind for next time, we are in the county's aggregate for energy, and it's a pretty significant savings for gas and electric, and, um, we've been in it for a year now, so it's just a rollover for the last contract, so I'll get that to Don.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that is tabled until, uh, next, um, week.
Don, receive.
We need to go to that?
To table it?
Yeah.
Technically, yes.
All right.
Well, there wasn't actually a motion pending, so you really don't need to motion to table it, cause there wasn't a motion, there was never a motion on the table in the first place.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Good.
Today I received a, um, email from, uh, Riley O'Brien, uh, regarding CARES Act funding, and, uh, apparently, um, on behalf of legislator Terp, uh, legislation to allow CARES Act funding to municipalities, uh, fire and school districts, determine municipal agreements with Monroe County. Uh, I am proud to share that this legislation has unanimously passed Monroe County Legislature and has taken effect. Um, so, uh, if a municipality, uh, incurred expenses directly related to COVID and such expenses are documented, they may contact that, uh, to, excuse me, Monroe County Department of Finance with their contact information right now. And so, I believe, uh, pass that on to, um, Heather and to Jake, uh, regarding anything that you may have documented regarding COVID, and, um, you can pass that on, I'll forward this on to you guys if you ever got it, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's great news.
Yeah.
Okay, Don, anything for us? I muted myself, sorry about that. No, I don't have anything other than to thank the boards for the reappointment. Maybe Jake will touch on the, uh, the partial sidewalks that got completed and I sent some money out, so you can, like, point that, Jake. Um, when you get down to the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, they don't give anything. Department of Public Works.
All right, just think we're here, um, the sidewalks, I'll start with the short section, um, down off of, uh, North Bonds, uh, from Kittleburg, there was a section, there was a escrow council a few years back for the completion of sidewalks on this other building that was completed, um, and the sidewalks were done in front of that, uh, so the engineers sent a letter, a request to release some of the funds, I believe there's about fourteen thousand plus, uh, still in the escrow for the sidewalk, but this is authorized, a release of twenty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars or something, plus or minus, it's about a hundred and fifty to sidewalk, so, um, that was done. Speaking of sidewalks, uh, East Main Street, you probably don't notice, cause it's right on Main Street, the new sidewalks going up there, uh, in tantric, in a slinger, um, for the soil, uh, in early part of the week, is when they, it's the first time they can get it, so they're coming back next week to get that sub squared away, but, uh, they were real nice shopping, they have, uh, they definitely have the, have a pretty good process working out there, they're moving around a lot, so, um, and then the same, speaking of, actually, I guess, keep segueing, um, Clancy's got the Clover Drive, uh, got a drag jack going on their way, uh, they've got the south side done, put that back, starting to pull the north side that's going along, uh, real well, neighbors, everybody's being wonderful, um, down the street working, it's a narrow street to start with, so it's a little, a little, a little hectic down there, but everybody's been great, and, um, we're able to get that done, we're looking, maybe for probably that, you know, next week, maybe in the following week, get the contractor in to pour those, and that will, whenever you have it, then check with Marsha and see where we are with money to mill it, save or, uh, we'll see where we are, um, but, uh, that's, move along. That's it.
That's good.
Yeah.
Getting short, I know there's a tiny little getting into your sewer line, but, uh...
Yeah, we, we had a meeting earlier this week, uh, with stakeholders on the, uh, part of the budget was the Phillips Road, we had projects about twelve hundred feet of, uh, sewer line, um, that's gonna get, uh, care replaced by, uh, basically they pull and sock through it, uh, BBC, the pipe that they inflate and informs the inside of what existing pipe is, and we have, it relines it, like, um, so we had a meeting at, reconstruce meeting, uh, if you recall, we submitted, I don't know, we had about a five-day window, if even, I don't even think we, I think we had two days to submit the application, and then we found out within five, um, I know, I think it was a day, it was a very, very short window, um, but they announced some funding, uh, where it was, uh, submitted through the community of development grant against from Monroe County, um, planning and development managers that program for most of the municipalities in our county, um, and we were luckily, uh, awarded that, uh, it's about a hundred and two thousand dollar project, I think is what it was, the budget, and, correctly, but wrong, Marsha, it was sixty-seven thousand four hundred or sixty-four thousand seven hundred, one of those, right in there, um, I don't have it right in front of me, right? No, actually, I probably do, um, but it was over sixty thousand dollars, um, that we're gonna get towards that project, so, um, that we can, and then the mayor mentioned, uh, right before lunch, unfortunately, I was watching a video of a sewer line on, uh, on McCurderburg, and, um, I had a late, uh, late lunch today, but there we have, uh, some pesky roots coming out, it's an eight-inch clay, it's two-inch, or excuse me, two-foot long tiles, um, we talked to the company that they're on county bid about going to do that, one, I think John's gonna have to prepare, uh, purchase order request for that tomorrow, probably get that squared away, it's, uh, with the slide, there's the, with the trees and things there, we've addressed it a few times with the roots off, but I think the, uh, the roots have gotten used to eating some nutrient-rich water, they are pretty aggressive in there, so we're gonna try to have it once and for all. All right, that's it.
That's, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in that particular point, uh, I would, uh, ask that we take a, go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining, negotiations pursuant to article fourteen of the civil service law, if nobody else has anything that they would like to bring up prior to that. Have a motion, uh, in a second to go into executive session at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carry.
I'm just gonna try and, I'm just giving a second, and I will, uh, close it to everybody who should not be in here.
Okay. Thank you.